Good afternoon and welcome to today's hybrid New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Environmental Protection. To minimize disruptions, please place all electronic devices to vibrate or silent mode. If you'd like to submit testimony, please send via email to testimony@council.myc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.myc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair Gennaro, we are ready to begin.
Thank you, Sergeant. I think at the outset, I just want to thank everyone for their patience. This was a 1:00 hearing. The other hearing ran long, and so it is regrettable that that happens sometimes. So I want to thank you for your patience and for the members of the committee and people out there in Zoom land who are watching. Good afternoon. My name is Jim Gennaro, Chair of the Committee on Environmental Protection. Is it coming through through the mask? Can you hear it? Okay. And we'll be holding an oversight hearing today on renewable energy as well as New York City's climate adaptation efforts. We'll be hearing testimony on four pieces of legislation. Intro 315 authored by Councilmember Brannan in relation to identifying all vacant and underutilized municipally-owned sites that would be suitable for the development of renewable energy. That sounds like a good idea. Intro 330 sponsored by me that would require the city to create and maintain a database of subsurface conditions to support wider adoption of geothermal heat pumps. Resolution 169 authored by Councilmember Wrestler calling upon the CLCPA Climate Action Council to draft and the governor to implement a final Climate Action Council scoping plan that commits to meeting CLCPA targets and bold climate and environmental justice action in New York. Resolution 189 authored by Councilmember Aviles in support of the New York State Build Public Renewables Act, which would enable the New York Power Authority to build and own new renewable power generation, storage, and transmission. The reso supports the New York State Build Public Renewables Act, which is now in the state legislature. Proposed reso 258A authored by me, supporting the Clean Water, Clean Air, and Green Jobs Environmental Bond Act of 2022, which will be on the ballot this November 8th. If it is enacted by the voters, it would authorize the issuance of $4.2 billion in bonds to finance critical environmental restoration and resiliency projects across the state of New York. And I'll get into the fair share component of that when I hear testimony on it. I'm just trying to go quickly. Ten years ago, Superstorm Sandy devastated New York City, causing an estimated $19 billion in losses. In addition to damaging residential and commercial property, the storm also severely affected critical city infrastructure and services. Close to 2 million people lost power at some point during the storm. Con Ed Steam System was unable to service one-third of its customers for nearly two weeks. But two months before Sandy, the council passed Local Law 42 of 2012 in order to prepare for and mitigate the impact of, you know, climate change on New York City. That local law codified the New York City Panel on Climate Change, which had previously was created by Mayor Bloomberg. It had like a specific scope to look at city infrastructure. So it came into business, went out of business. I brought it back and gave it a much broader scope to do more than just look at infrastructure, to look at the impact on the city's economy, the impact on marginalized communities. It was like a whole thing. And so that's what one of the things that Local Law 42 of 2012 did. The other thing that Local Law 42 of 2012 did is that it, it, hang on, I lost my place. All right. This law also created the New York City Climate Adaptation Task Force. Now, the idea was for the New York City Panel on Climate Change to do its thing and then to interact with the, you know, Climate Change Adaptation Task Force and figure out how the city in a sensible, you know, measured, studious way could walk down the field towards the, you know, climate, you know, resilient future that we all want because of what I feared two months before Sandy, that we would get a big storm and like a lot of storm surge and no one would know what the hell to do. And that's exactly what happened. So I should have come up with that law several years earlier. But one of the, you know, one of the things that we want to probe in this hearing is that whatever became of the New York City Climate Change Adaptation Task Force, the New York City Climate Change Adaptation Task Force, that's a real thing. It's in law. No one seems to be able to find it. And so I didn't write the law for nothing, and I want to find it, and we're going to ask today about that. And, you know, notwithstanding the AdAPT New York Resiliency Plan that is being drafted by the administration pursuant to Local Law 122 of 2021, and as mine is standing that's going to be rolled out on the 10th anniversary of Sandy, you know, I want to probe the activities of the New York City Climate Adaptation Task Force over the last 10 years just to see what, if anything, it is doing now. I'd like to, I'd like to thank the great committee staff who've done such great work over the years. We have the committee counsel, Samara Swanston, who was not able to be here because she's under the weather. We send her our best and hope that she recovers fully. In her stead, we have Irene, what's your last name, Irene?
Byhavsky.
What's that?
Byhavsky.
Byhavsky. Policy analyst Ricky Chala, financial analyst Andrew Lane Lawless, and finally, my legislative director, Nabi Carr, for all of their hard work. And with that, I am going to recognize the council members that are here. We have Councilmember Hanks, Councilmember Nurse, Councilmember Wrestler, who I'm going to call upon in a minute to do a statement on his reso, Councilmember Aviles. I'd like to offer her the opportunity to make a statement as well. Councilmember Kagan and Councilmember Menon. And with that, I know that Lincoln has a time crunch.
Can I go first?
Okay, okay. So.
I'm happy to.
Okay, okay.
I'll jump in.
Lincoln is going.
Chair Gennaro, firstly, it's good to see you and glad you are feeling better.
Thank you.
I know it was a rough patch, so we're happy to see you back approaching full strength. I just want to thank all of my colleagues. I think there's 37 of us who have joined as co-sponsors of Resolution 169. And so I want to thank each of you for your strong support and thank all of the tremendous advocates who have pushed for this resolution, which I really do believe is critically important. Oh, I'll bring that in a little closer, sorry. My vertical challenges are even felt when I'm sitting. The city council knows all too well that the climate crisis is the single greatest threat facing the people of New York. It's here, it's now, and it depends, it demands nothing less than urgent and comprehensive action. This resolution calls on the state Climate Action Council and the governor to implement a final scoping plan this year to meeting New York's Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, the CLCPA targets, and taking bold climate and environmental justice action in New York. With the passage of the CLCPA, we no longer have climate goals in New York State. We have climate mandates, and the purpose of the Climate Action Council's scoping work is to flesh out those climate mandates with specific actions that will do what needs to be done to drive down emissions. The mandates in the CLCPA could not be more ambitious and impressive. We are proud as New Yorkers to be a national leader in this space to fight climate change. The mandates are as follows. For the state to reach net zero carbon economy by 2050, a 100% zero emission electric sector by 2040, a 40% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030, 70% renewable energy by 2030. Meeting these targets is essential to ensuring that we mitigate the harms caused by the climate crisis and work towards building a green, efficient city that isn't overcome by the rising sea levels, the annual superstorms, the unbreathable air, and the sweltering summers. The 10-year anniversary of Hurricane Sandy is almost upon us, and it's a sobering reminder that the failure to act on climate change has devastating consequences. We have lost neighbors and loved ones and seen our communities destroyed from Sandy and subsequent storms. Communities are still not recovered from the aftermath of Sandy. In my district, Iguanas Houses, we still have capital work that has not been done to fix the destruction caused by Sandy. It's clear we need to do everything in our power to ensure that our neighborhoods aren't devastated yet again by the next superstorm. We also need to ensure that the communities who have been historically and continually harmed most by the impacts of climate change are able to reap the benefits of these changes. The CLCPA rightly calls for 40% of the green investments to be directed to disadvantaged, vulnerable communities, especially communities of color. We must work together to make sure these billions of dollars are going to the places that need it most. To avoid climate devastation, we need action on every level of government to rein in corporate actors, set ambitious, meaningful targets, and push to meet them. We are sending a strong and unified message that this city council and the 8.6 million people that we represent knows that the CAC must act to comprehensively address climate change on our streets, in our neighborhoods, across our city and our state. We hope that the CAC and the governor will heed the call and implement the strongest possible plan to address climate change in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. Thank you for your, you know, passionate voice on this. There's a lot of advocates that have, you know, still been, I wasn't able to make it this morning, but I'd like to thank all the advocates that have been critical in, you know, being, you know, part of the team to make sure that this council makes its voice heard. So I thank you very much, Lincoln, for your passion on this. And before I call Councilmember Aviles, I want to recognize that we're joined by Councilmember Gutierrez, a great member of this committee. And now I recognize Councilmember Aviles for a statement on her resolution.
Great. Thank you so much, Chair Gennaro, for holding this hearing today on Resolution 189, a bill which supports the state-level legislation known as Build Public Renewables Act. With the passage of the Landmark Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act of 2019, New York State committed to moving away from nonrenewable energy and relying entirely on renewable energy sources. Combined with recently passed federal legislation, the Inflation Reduction Act, which provides incentives to nonprofit entities as well as a host of subsidies for efficiency upgrades, there now exists, at least from a cost-benefit perspective, not a single reason why we cannot build a democratically-owned public power authority. The Build Public Renewables Act will lead us into the future not just on renewable energy but on labor and employment standards, and will undoubtedly serve as a model to other states who pursue democratization of utility services. This legislation will ensure that the people of New York are offered quality, livable, and unionized jobs. Workers currently employed in nonrenewables will be offered a just transition to green energy jobs. And near and dear to my heart, as Chair of Public Housing Committee, the BPRA will require the New York Public Utilities Authority to prioritize the hiring of residents at NYCHA to undertake work done at NYCHA-owned properties. We know that thus far privately-owned utilities have failed to rise up to the challenge of meeting climate goals and to say nothing of their willingness to center justice in their business practices. While I don't fault for-profit entities for what may be the nature of their business, these entrenched interests should not prevent us from leveraging the incredible opportunity before us to build a better future for our city and state. We've squandered so much time with regards to the climate crisis. We've squandered time in failing to heed to the calls of our environmental justice communities. Let us not miss this moment. Now is the time to mobilize. Now is a time to lead with vision. I want to thank all the 27 co-sponsors of this resolution. Thank my state-level colleagues who have put forward the bill. I look forward to working with the advocates in the room today in this fight for a democratically accountable public utility that centers justice. And I look forward to hearing from the comments that will be offered on this legislation today. And I would be remiss if I did not mention the island of Puerto Rico, who is also fighting to make the utility public again. It was public at one point and put into private hands, and we see the result of that, much to the catastrophe and ongoing assault to the people of Puerto Rico. Fuera Luma, Build Public Renewables. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aviles, for your common sense and insightful and very important resolution. We really appreciate you bringing it forward, and thank you for being here. Before I turn it over to the council to swear on the witnesses, I want to recognize that we're joined by Councilmember Robert Holden, a member of this committee. So I'll call upon the council to do the housekeeping and to swear witnesses in, and then we commence with your good testimony.
Thank you, Chair.
If I just may, we're also joined by Councilmember Moya, so I wanted to put that on the record. Thank you for being here, Francisco.
Thank you, Chair, again. Good afternoon, everyone, and I would like to welcome representatives from the administration to testify. We have Anthony Fiori and Julia Casa Grande, and also Chris Diamond, who will be available for questions and will be appearing over Zoom. And now I would like to ask you to raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee today and respond honestly to councilmember questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Diamond? I guess I saw him.
Has everyone duly sworn?
Mr. Diamond? I just, we just did not hear you answer. Thank you. I think that was yes.
Okay. We can read his lips. Okay, very good.
Mr. Fiori, you might begin your testimony.
Yes. Thank you for being here and for offering your good testimony.
Okay. Good afternoon, Councilmember Gennaro and members of the Committee on Environmental Protection. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on the potential for renewable energy generation and installation of geothermal heat pump systems in New York City, the subjects of introductions 315 and 330. Again, my name is Anthony Fiori. I am New York City's Chief Decarbonization Officer and Deputy Commissioner of Energy Management at the Department of Citywide Administrative Services. In this role, I oversee decarbonization mandates for city government operations. I'm joined today by Christopher Diamond, the Director of the Office of Sustainability, Resilience, and Commissioning at the city's Department of Design and Construction, and Julia Casa Grande, Policy Advisor at the New York City Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice. In partnership with the council, the administration has committed to achieving carbon neutrality by 2050, focusing primarily on opportunities to invest in environmental justice neighborhoods. The city shares the goals that these bills seek to address and looks forward to working with the council on this legislation to inform the potential to generate renewable energy and decarbonize our building systems in New York City.
And if I could just jump in for a second, when you talk about this legislation, you're talking about 315 and 330, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
The city has committed to using clean sources of electricity to power New York City government operations and increasing renewable energy generation on city properties. Notably, DCAST is deploying 100 megawatts of solar on city properties by 2025 to reduce load and improve local grid reliability. To date, the city has completed over 120 solar projects that generate about 18 megawatts of electricity and has identified nearly 200 additional sites as solar-ready. Building on this success, the city has also committed to securing 100% of its electrical consumption from renewable energy. The Adams Administration has made a historic investment to advance clean energy generation, resulting in the buildout of two new transmission lines that will bring 2,500 megawatts.
Sorry for the interruption, but I just liked, if people could not have side conversations, I'm hearing chatter from somewhere. Where is that coming from? Oh. Sergeant, if you could take care of that, I appreciate it. Okay. I just wanted you to be able to.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So the historic investment has resulted in buildout of two new transmission lines that will bring 2,500 megawatts of renewable energy directly into New York City. This commitment will not only reduce the city government's carbon footprint, but it will also reduce air pollutants, including carbon dioxide, sulfur dioxide, and NOx by almost 50%, and reduce wholesale energy prices by almost 20%. In addition, in fall of 2021, our partners at the New York City Economic Development Corporation announced a 15-year offshore wind vision plan to develop best-in-class infrastructure to support the construction and operation of offshore wind farms in the New York bite, including infrastructure to support manufacturing, staging, installation, operations, and maintenance and transmission. The city has committed almost $200 million to offshore wind projects, which puts New York City on a path to reduce 34.5 million tons of carbon dioxide, as well as meet its goals of 100% clean electricity by 2040 and carbon neutrality by 2050. The Economic Development Corporation is realizing the offshore wind vision plan by announcing an agreement with Equinor and its partner BP to transform the 73-acre South Brooklyn Marine Terminal into one of the largest offshore wind port facilities in the nation earlier this year. The terminal will become a power interconnection site for the Empire Wind One project and serve as a hub to support the Empire Wind Two and the Beacon Wind offshore wind farms. The administration is committed to additional offshore wind spans across New York City. Our partners at the Economic Development Corporation have also released a request for proposals, which recently closed, to transform the 33-acre Rossville Municipal Site in Staten Island into a site for offshore wind manufacturing and industrial jobs, and they are currently reviewing responses. Finally, last month, the Economic Development Corporation and the City University of New York announced that the six City University of New York colleges that are initial recipients of $4 million in city funding to help train the next generation of professionals for climate smart careers, including training students in electric vehicle repairs, creating Built Environment and Green Energy Solution courses, while also developing new offshore wind industry curriculum and providing needed certification for green energy jobs. The city will continue to make great strides in assessing the potential for renewable energy within New York City in the coming year. For example, the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice is leading PowerUp NYC, an energy planning study that will identify specific actions the city can take in the near term to rapidly advance our energy transition goals, including actions that support the strategic interconnection of offshore wind and clean transmission projects, the rapid deployment of solar and storage resources within the five boroughs, and the accelerated deployment of clean energy on public land. The city has also been a leader in building decarbonization. Since 2014, DCAST has invested nearly $1 billion in energy efficiency and clean energy generation projects across 2,000 city-owned buildings, contributing to a reduction in city government energy use by the equivalent of about 250,000 residencies and avoiding about $115 million in annual energy costs, reducing overall greenhouse gas emissions by almost 25% between fiscal years 2006 and 2019, and generating more than 4,000 family-sustaining jobs. Geothermal heat pumps and heating systems are one way to further the transition of clean energy technologies from fossil-fuel-based heating. Geothermal heat pumps or ground-source heat pumps rely on the constant temperature beneath the earth's surface to provide clean and efficient heating and cooling while using less electricity than other types of heat pumps. The city has two tools to help the public understand the potential use of geothermal heat pumps in New York City. First, the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice maintains the New York City Community Energy Planning Tool, which shows ground-source heat pump potential by block and allows geothermal feasibility to be mapped alongside other community characteristics relating to environmental justice and resiliency. Second, DDC maintains the geothermal pre-feasibility tool in compliance with Local Law 6 of 2016, which identifies areas where geothermal heat pump systems may be an option for retrofitting buildings' heating and cooling systems based on geological and hydro-geological data. The city has already built eight building-level geothermal projects, including at the FDNY Rescue Company II Facility in Brooklyn and at PS 62 on Staten Island. Pursuant to Local Law 2 of 2022, the city is also undertaking a study to leverage city-owned sites for district-scale geothermal studies, geothermal systems. This study will help the city understand how to realize further efficiencies and maximize environmental benefits through balanced loads and the diversity of thermal sources and sinks. The city is enthusiastic to work with the council after the completion of the feasibility assessment to identify a path forward to facilitate geothermal heat pumps' use throughout New York City. It's important to emphasize that the city is also focusing its investments in the historically marginalized communities that experience cumulative disproportionate impacts of environmental hazards and climate risks. Two-thirds of the greenhouse gas and fine particulate matter emission reductions achieved to date through city-led programs have been in such communities. The city is in the midst of a comprehensive, data-based assessment of environmental justice in New York City. The resulting report will identify communities being disproportionately impacted by environmental burdens and will form the basis of an implementation plan to promote environmental justice and ensure equity is an integral part of the city's decision-making processes at large. Ensuring affordable energy access for all has also been a key focus of the city's energy planning efforts, and the city has been a strong advocate for low-income utility customers. Reaching our climate goals will require many buildings to switch their heating and hot water systems from fossil fuels to heat pumps powered by clean electricity. It is imperative that this transition be planned to ensure it is affordable for all New Yorkers. A just transition to a clean energy system is foundational to addressing climate change and creating a fairer and healthier city. Before my colleagues and I take your questions, I want to comment briefly on the bills being considered today. Introduction 315 would require the city to identify and report on vacant or underutilized municipal properties, including closed and kept solid waste landfills and brownfields that would be suitable for renewable energy generation. The Department of Citywide Administrative Services would undertake this work and believes that the understanding and making public what city properties may be underutilized or vacant and advising how these properties could potentially be used is a worthwhile exercise. This work should support communities and other city agencies as they develop priorities for vacant and underutilized lots, which may support any number of potential uses, including renewable energy generation, the creation of affordable housing, new parks and urban farms, relocating critical city facilities that are at increasing risk of flooding, or to address other unforeseen needs. Understanding what tax lots are going to be unused or underutilized for the indeterminate future as compared to those that have some future use plan is essential to allowing DCAST and other agencies to identify the best use of these properties as we focus efforts on developing in-city renewable energy generation potential. We look forward to working with council on this bill and on the larger effort to use vacant city properties to make our city more livable as we increase the share of clean renewable resources that power our city. Intro 330 would require the city to create a database of subsurface conditions to support better engineering of geothermal heat pumps. We agree that geothermal is an important tool in the transition to a clean energy economy, and in some locations will be a primary method for decarbonizing building heating systems. As you know, geological characteristics are a key component of geothermal systems, and the subterranean space in New York City is no less complex than the above-ground real estate. That is exactly why, with the help from the council, the That is exactly why, with the help from the council, the city developed the geothermal prescreening tool and the New York City Community Energy Planning Tool. In addition, DDC released New York City's Geothermal Heat Pump Manual in 2002, the first of its kind, to educate and assist DDC project managers and their consultants. The manual was updated in 2012 to reflect changes in the industry and technological advances in materials and has come to serve as the how-to guide to doing geothermal in the city. As I mentioned earlier, the administration is developing a program to pilot district-level geothermal systems on city-owned sites in accordance with Local Law 2 of this year. Beginning next March and over the coming years, the administration will begin reporting its findings as we develop and implement the pilot, which will help inform how these systems can maximize geothermal opportunities to meet our 2050 energy goals. The city also wants to applaud New York State for passing the Utility Thermal Energy Network and Jobs Act, which will allow utilities to develop projects that will connect multiple buildings into a shared thermal network, including community thermal systems. This means utilities can provide thermal energy to customers rather than fossil-based natural gas to meet their space heating, water heating, and cooling needs. The administration looks forward to continuing to work with the council to build off these tools and the pilot program to identify the best opportunities to support the growth of the geothermal heat pump industry in New York City and push for rapid building decarbonization in line with our climate, energy, and equity goals. In short, we support the intent of these bills and look forward to working with the council on them. Thank you for this opportunity to testify on this important topic. My colleagues and I are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Fiore. Your good reputation certainly precedes you here today, and I appreciate all of your good efforts to make this a greener and more sustainable city. As is customary, I, as chair, would ordinarily lead off the questions, but since the hearing started so late, and I have to be here for the whole hearing anyway, I'm going to defer my questions and give an opportunity to my colleagues who've been waiting since 1:00 to ask theirs to go first. Everyone's supposed to go, "Ah, how gracious." Nothing, nothing, nothing? My God, no one's listening. But, okay. So we have council members who have signed up for questions, and it's my pleasure to recognize my chair on the sanitation and solace committee, Councilmember Nurse. Hang on, we're doing the five-minute thing? We're doing that?
I only have two questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Very generous of you.
Thank you.
I'm glad to be first. Thank you for your testimony. I had, I think I had a question for the Mayor's Office of Environmental Justice first. So my question was, the Federal Inflation Reduction Act has further incentivized renewable energy, particularly in disadvantaged communities, and now allows public and tax-exempt entities to access solar initiatives. So we were just curious if the city has begun to analyze how this new law can support efforts and reduce the cost of building solar on public buildings, schools, and land.
Just push it.
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. We are beginning to look into it. I don't know if Ellie, do you have anything to share on that? Okay. I'm going to pass it over to my colleague for a little more information on where we've started.
Hi, my name is Ellie Khan from the Mayor's Office of.
Sorry. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee? And do you respond, and to respond honestly to councilmember questions?
Yes. All right. So my name is Ellie Khan, Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice. The IRS guidance was only released last week, so I think we are still looking at it, but it's something that is on our radar, and we're absolutely paying attention to, and is a very, very exciting opportunity.
I'll just add that we are excited that, for the first time, it does allow municipalities to access these tax credits, although at a reduced rate, so we're still evaluating, you know, what the impact of that will be, but certainly is a good headwind.
Okay, great. Yeah, very excited as well. And then I think this question is more for you. It's been good to see the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice host Power Up NYC community town halls as part of the mandated long-term energy plan. This report will provide us with specific recommendations for integrating additional renewable energy sources citywide, including a renewable Rikers. Can you just give us an update or tell us when we can expect the report release?
We're expecting to release the report this spring. I don't know the exact, I don't think we have the exact date at this point.
So in the spring, okay. Okay, thank you. That's it, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Nurse. A pleasure to have you with us. And the next council member that signed up for questions, I happily recognize Councilmember Hanks for questions.
Thank you, Chair Gennaro. Thank you so much for such an important hearing. I'm very excited about the bills that we're talking about, the hearing today. So my question is, how much energy is expected to be generated by the vacant municipality-owned sites that are available for renewable energy generation?
Well, I think that's the exact question that Intro 315 is looking to answer. And what I can tell you today is that the city is committed to building 100 megawatts of solar generation by 2025 on city properties that include roofs, vacant lots, and other properties. And we're also currently evaluating a 2030 deployment target. And then, in addition, the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice is in the midst of developing the city's next long-term energy and climate plan, and part of this process will be to evaluate renewable energy potential on Rikers Island, as we just heard.
So do you anticipate with the attempting to identify these sites, do you, what are some of the challenges or barriers you may expect, or what we can expect to bump against in getting this done and finding these sites that have potential?
So, you know, there's over 12,000 lots in the municipal portfolio. Many of those are of limited use, meaning like they're sliver lots, or they're passageways, throughways, either for pedestrians or for cars, or other restrictions. There's also a whole population of properties that are regulated, like wetlands or coastal areas, and so those types of properties would be much more challenging. But I think as we go through this and weed those types of properties out, there will be a population of properties that may be amenable to the citing of renewable energy generation.
Thank you. And one last one, how much energy does New York City need to generate to reach the net-zero energy generation by 2050?
Okay, so, thank you for that question. First, let me just say, you know, Local Law requires the city to reduce our carbon emissions 80% by 2050. And then, in order to reach carbon neutrality, the city could employ further energy efficiency interventions, load modifying interventions, or offsets. The state law also requires, as we heard, 100% clean energy generation by 2040. Now, the amount of energy generation required is dependent on the amount of new load, say from electrifying buildings' heating and hot water systems, electrifying generation, I'm sorry, transportation, what building codes may look like, appliance standards, economic activity, weather, and many other things. So it's not an easy question to answer, but the city's undertaken extensive planning studies to look at just that. And using data published by the New York Independent System Operator that is responsible for the overall grid, the expectation is that there will need to be about 34% more electricity in 2050 than there is today. And then, that generation will come from many locations. It will come from in-city, it will come from upstate, it will come from offshore, and from adjacent states as well.
Thank you so much. Sounds like we have a long way to go, but this is absolutely a very good start. Thank you for your answers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanks. Appreciate your great questions. Next, I'm very pleased to recognize Councilmember Gutierrez for questions.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for allowing us to get our questions in. I have two questions. This one is regarding Local Law 97, so I hope in some capacity you can answer it. I did notice that very recently, DOB finally released a series of draft rules and protocols for property owners to meet with compliance of Local Law 97. Would you be able to weigh in on what kind of outreach has been done, how that looks like, where does it live outside of the website, and in what way are you all assisting income-restricted rental and co-op buildings who have to meet these compliance benchmarks by 2035?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember, for that question. I don't have all of that information in front of me right now. I'd be happy to discuss further outside of this hearing. However, for outreach, the New York City Accelerator is reaching out to buildings that have, that are required to comply with Local Law 97, especially if limits have changed with the Energy Star Performance metric mapping that came out in the rule.
Please pull the microphone right up to your.
Oh, sorry. Yes, the New York City Accelerator is doing that outreach at this time. And as far as HPD outreach, I would have to get back to you about exactly how that's ongoing, but happy to discuss further.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just curious on what that outreach looks like, if it's physical snail mail, letters, someone knocking on their door. I just would love to know what that looks like.
Yeah, I don't have the list of what they're doing in front of me, but I know that they're doing multiple things, including calling letters. They're looking for multiple touchpoints to make every effort to reach building owners.
Thank you. And my last question, I was reviewing a report from the Center for Urban Future, where they demonstrated that New York City buildings have shown an overall decrease in emissions since 2014. However, eight of 25 city agencies' buildings' emissions have actually increased. Can you discuss or speak to what that, why that is, and kind of what is the conflict between our city's larger climate goals and how these city agencies are operating?
I'm not intimately familiar with that report. I was briefly on it, and I think there were some methodology issues with how that was being reported. But what I can tell you is, as of the end of 2019, city government operations' emissions were reduced by 23% as compared to 15% in the private sector. And I think that's illustrative of the investments that the city is making, and that it is leading by example in reducing emissions at a faster pace than the public sector. So for any one particular building, may increase emissions for a whole host of reasons. It could be, you know, increased functional use of a building, and, for example, an existing school that gets, you know, pre-K operations in it. It could be new buildings. It could be new regulations that require additional regulatory treatment, for example, with wastewater resource recovery facilities. So, you know, if there's a list of those eight buildings, we're happy to look at those eight buildings and come back with an answer. But overall, for the government portfolio, it's outpacing the private sector in emission reductions.
Interesting. Okay, so you disagree with this conclusion from their report?
If the conclusion is that overall, the city is lagging behind the private sector, I disagree with that conclusion. If it's about eight specific buildings, I would have.
Agencies, it's eight specific agencies.
Yeah. So, again, I can speak to the overall portfolio, and, as I mentioned, an agency, for example, like the Department of Environmental Protection, where there are new regulations that require increased treatment of wastewater and increased treatment of the water supply, that adds energy use. So you could see, because of new functional requirements, an increase in energy use for any one particular.
But that wouldn't offset the average that you were just saying of the 2019 reduction, down 23%.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez. Okay, now it's my turn. And as I said in my opening statement, I'm going to go back in time a little bit, because I want to make sure that what I did 10 years ago doesn't get lost. Hopefully, you're going to have some answers for this. I was, see that there's a question that was formulated by staff that is more coherent than the rambling about it. Here it is. Local Law 42 of 2012 mandated the creation of a city climate change adaptation task force that would consist of city, state, and federal agencies, and private organizations and entities tasked with the formulating, tasked with and formulating and updating continued strategies to address the potential impact of climate change on the city's communities, vulnerable populations, public health, natural systems, critical infrastructure, buildings, and the city's economy. When I brought the New York City Panel on Climate Change back from mothballs and created it in law permanently, I wanted to, you know, broaden the scope of it. And, you know, my thinking was to, you know, move the city forward in a, as I said before, in kind of like a very structured and thoughtful way to deal with our, you know, climate change adaptation imperatives. And the whole idea was that the MPCC would get together, do all the raw science, and then there would be convened the task force on, you know, climate change adaptation. And it left a fair amount of latitude in the law back then so that the, so that the administration, it didn't necessarily have to be the same people, you know, because, let's say, like, the panel on climate change, you know, puts forward certain science, and then, you know, you might want to have a certain group of people that you put together to deal with that, to figure out how we, like, move forward. So it left a fair amount of, you know, latitude regarding, you know, the appointment process and who had to be on it, and so there was, I felt it needed some scope, so to speak, in order to be the most flexible and adaptive. And so, that's like the, you know, that's like the preamble, and so, first question, has the task force been meeting twice annually as mandated by Local Law 42 of 2012?
So I'm going to ask my colleague Rebecca Fishman from the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice to join us and answer your question.
Sure. I think Ricky's got to do his thing. Let me just mention that we're joined by Brad Reed, the head of the council's Division on Infrastructure, who plays such a critical role, and grateful for him to be sitting in on this hearing today.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this council, and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gennaro, for following up on the Local Law 42 of 2012. I know that you asked us this question during the hearing on October 3rd, too.
I did?
Yes.
Okay. I forget.
We looked into this, and the Climate Change Adaptation Task Force, or the CCATF, has convened under the prior administration and did create an inventory of risks and infrastructure, and it is nearly complete, but was not completed because of the pandemic. The new office of the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice will need to revisit this.
What was adding at that last part?
The new office, so our office, the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice, will need to revisit it. The report was never completed, but all the risks and inventory of risks to our infrastructure was. was created.
Yeah, I think you're missing the point. The point was, in the first incarnation of the, you know, New York City Panel on Climate Change, that was created not by this legislature in law. It was created by the Bloomberg administration. He just created it because he's the mayor, he can just create it. So that was created. They fulfilled their mandate on critical city infrastructure. And they, you know, and back then, the Climate Change Adaptation Task Force did not even exist. So I think what you're referring to is the New York City Panel on Climate Change in its first incarnation, previous to Local Law 42 of 2012, did what it was supposed to do as mandated by Mayor Bloomberg, and that's great. And I thought that was great at the time. But I also thought it was great to, so the Panel on Climate Change, you know, came into existence, fulfilled its mandate, went out of business. I brought it back. And so, and I know that that's been active, that has been, you know, meeting. But it was, you know, we had two pillars of how we moved forward on, you know, climate change adaptation, which is, I guess, now called resiliency or, you know, resilience or whatever. And, you know, the whole idea of that law 10 years ago was to have the newly created in-law panel on, you know, New York City Panel on, you know, Climate Change with its much broader scope, not just on infrastructure, but, you know, the impact of climate change on the city's communities, vulnerable populations, public health, natural systems, critical infrastructure, city buildings, and the economy. It put a lot of thought into this. And so, so the, so the task force, so the Climate Change Panel was, had a much broader scope. It was supposed to meet and then bring forward the science that would, you know, go to the, you know, Climate Change Adaptation Task Force that could pretty much be whoever the administration wanted it to be, because they wanted to give them that flexibility. If you have like a fixed membership that has certain expertise or whatever, it might not fit for the next go-round of the science that came out of the Panel on Climate Change. So I wanted the administration to have the flexibility to configure the Panel on Climate Change Adaptation any way it wanted, but it's in law and it has to happen. And so it was, it was, that was the construct. That was my idea of how we move forward, and it was signed into law. And so what I'm hearing now is, we don't really think this exists anymore, and the test, and what you just spoke of, you know, regarding critical infrastructure, that's more in line with what the original New York City Panel on Climate Change as envisioned by Mayor Mike Bloomberg to deal with infrastructure issues. Now we're in like the second, you know, this is, you know, New York City Panel on Climate Change 2.0, broader scope, it's, you know, it's in law, it's, it's, it's a permanent part of the merrility, as is the New York City Panel on Climate Change Adaptation. So it seems like we have the MPCC going strong, but we don't have the Climate Change Adaptation and, you know, that task force. And unless and until this council gets rid of it, which we're not going to do, it has to exist, it has to be, it has to be impaneled and has to do its work. So, again, has that been happening every six months? Again, you folks are, you know, you folks, you know, the administration, less than a year old, probably never heard of Local Law 42 of 2012, but, you know, it's on the books. And just because the De Blasio administration, when I wasn't around, you know, didn't keep that task force moving forward as it was supposed, because after I did it, I left the council like after that because of term limits. So the question is, like, the quest for the, you know, New York City Climate Change Adaptation Task Force, that has to exist. That's in law. That's a mandate. It's not discretionary. And it's supposed to work hand in glove with the New York City Panel on Climate Change. So I ask again, like, the status of, you know, of the original construct of that law was, you know, the MPCC meets, puts together the science, you know, the administration puts together the Climate Change Adaptation Task Force, private sector people, whatever, you know, universities, I don't care. I leave that to the administration's good judgment, but it has to exist and it has to turn out a work product. So anything further you have to say about this, I appreciate.
Yes, I apologize if my answer was not clear enough. Should have been clearer that this did happen and that there is a report and it is just not complete. It was paused due to the pandemic and that our office, the new office of the Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice, would need to revisit.
Okay, I'm not exactly following that, so.
I guess we will get back to you with more details, but what I am trying to say is that this did happen. What you're describing has happened, and we just haven't, we haven't been able to publish the report. The report is not complete.
Okay, so people have heard of the City Panel on Climate Change Adaptation. That's like a thing?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's what I.
And I apologize if my answer was not clear enough, but that is, I was trying to convey.
I, you know, didn't want to be too, you know, touchy about it, but, and there are other follow-up questions for that, but, but to the extent that your office may be able to pull together, you know, the history of, you know, what the, you know, Climate Change Adaptation Task Force has, you know, produced in terms of work products, that would be, you know, much appreciated by the council. I mean, we created it, we thought about it, it got signed into law, it needs to do what it was called upon to do. And my next question after that, so is my understanding that the next report of the MPCC is the fourth report? Is that, that's the one that you're referring to, right?
So these are two, these are two separate reports.
Okay.
So what you're talking about is the fourth assessment.
Right.
That is going to be published by the end of April 2024, hopefully around Earth Day. There will be a 2022 Climate Science and Projections Report with updated projections for the city to use. This will be published by the end of this year. This will be one year after the IPCC publication, so that satisfies the law.
Okay, you know what? I'm going to give a little note to staff here. If we could arrange a, you know, not to take up everyone's time too much here, to have, to arrange, to brief me, you know, I'm using everyone's time here, to brief me on, you know, how the, you know, interplay between the MPCC and the, and the city Climate Change Adaptation Task Force, how that is working. I think it's supposed to be like every six months or whatever it is. And so I think a briefing is called for to make sure that everybody's on the same page in terms of what, you know, Local Law 42 of 2012 is, and I understand that, you know, there are, there's a, there's some kind of climate change adaptation, was my statement? So many papers on my desk here. In my statement, I made reference to, yeah, so it, there's something coming out like later this month, something called ADAPT New York. It's a resiliency plan that's, that was produced pursuant to Local Law 122 of 2021, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Right. And so, and while these are all great, you know, I think Local Law 122 was a great law. Okay, yep. You know, the, 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 the original vision of this council back in 2012 was to, was to have the, you know, city's, you know, climate change adaptation, you know, policies come forth from the wellspring of the interchange between the MPCC and the, you know, Climate Change Adaptation Task Force. And then we have other calls for, you know, climate change adaptation plans, like resiliency plans, and it just, it seems like a little disjointed. I mean, so, you know, we had a construct. I want to see where that is at. And no problem with this, you know, with this ADAPT New York resiliency plan, but, I mean, you know, I have this attachment to this construct that was created a long time ago, and that's the way it's supposed to work. So this will follow up in a briefing, I'm calling upon Ricky to make a little note and Naby to make a note, and we'll set that up, and we'll have a grand old time.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember.
We'll have big fun. I'll bring cookies. I have, I actually have cookies in my backpack. I bought them at lunch, but I didn't eat them. But, so thank you. Thank you very much for your answer. I appreciate your, you know, willingness to engage going forward. And Ricky, you said Councilmember Nurse, I recognize Councilmember Nurse again for questions.
Thanks, Chair. I did, I did have a question, because that first line of questioning, I was having a hard time. I was just curious about the task force. You said it has met. Okay, has it met this year?
So the, the task force, as far as I understand, has convened and did publish, or, sorry, did not put together a report, but that report is just not complete. It's not ready to be released. But we do have to go look, look at that and figure out how we can release that.
Right. So convened, you're waiting on to finish the report, you're figuring it out, and it will convene again this year as the twice per year?
We will get back to you on that.
Got it.
Yeah, it's just, you know, and this comes down to a question of like what, you know, what the black letter law says, you know, black letter law says, you know, just in my own, my memory going back 10 years, which is asking a lot for me, that, you know, it was supposed to, both the MPCC and the Climate Change Adaptation Task Force was supposed to meet on a regular schedule, you know, certainly not anticipating a, you know, pandemic, but that should have been like the rhythm going forward. Okay, this is the MPCC, this is the Climate Change Adaptation Task Force, this is the construct, this is how we do it. We put together, you know, so every, every meeting of the, of the, every, you know, incarnation of the Climate Change Adaptation Task Force is kind of like a pickup game, so to speak, depending upon what talent we need to deal with the science that came out of the thing, right? And so the, the thing, the MPCC. So I gave the administration a lot of latitude, but not so much latitude that it didn't have to bother with it. I mean, that's, you know, I can't do that. It's just like, the law is the law. It's not like it convenes if you feel like it. It's, 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 it's black letter law, and that will be explored, and Sandy has my back on this, too. So I'm very grateful, grateful for that. And let me quickly go through the statement here, your testimony, Mr. Fiore, you know, the bottom line, that when it comes to 315 and 330, I mean, you know, back in the day, I was the one that, you know, I mean, being a geologist, that was, I was, you know, I thought that the geothermal thing was really the way to go. And a lot of the stuff you talked about in your testimony was, back in my day, when we, well, I guess it's still my day, but I really want to, but I thought that the one, you know, notwithstanding all the work that's been done over the last decade on geothermal, you know, I thought that, you know, the one piece that was still missing was the overall, you know, geologic assessment of where, of where certain hotspots would be in the city. And to do that, and based on your statement here, you seem to concur that this is a worthwhile endeavor. I just want to reaffirm that.
So first, thank you for, you know, speaking about geothermal back then and bringing it up. And as I mentioned, we agree that geothermal is an important tool. In response to that original law, the city has since then developed two tools to do just what you're talking about. I think we would love to work with you to understand what additional layers or data might be incorporated into those tools to bring additional value. Absolutely would like to work with you on that.
Okay, I mean, if part of what we're calling for in, you know, intro 330 is already, you know, is already underway, you know, let's see what kind of, you know, value added we can bring in this new bill to kind of fill any gaps where there might be. And I applaud the administration for the extent to which it's already taken a look at, at least on some level, the geologic piece, you know, because, as you said, you just can't do it everywhere. But, you know, to know where the hotspots are, then people building buildings, people managing buildings, people looking to comply with Local Law 97, you know, there's, yeah, I foresee some sort of, you know, you know, city-sponsored geothermal conference to sort of help, you know, building managers and others on, or, you know, including that, because something I think is definitely necessary is, is that, you know, once the rules are all said and done for Local Law 97, I mean, I think there has to be a real, you know, proactive way to get out that information to everyone who needs it. And I think a conference is a great way to do that. Not a conference where everybody gets COVID. We don't want that. But we'll figure out some way to step around the COVID and have the conference and get the information and all that. And so I certainly appreciate that. And with that, does anyone else have any questions for the administration? Okay. No, sure, I just, you know, the hour is late, it's going to, the rain's going to come chucking down real hard and, you know, and I'm ready for that. And so with that, I'd like to thank the administration for your, you know, great testimony and sportsmanship, okay? Whatever, you know?
Thank, well, thank you, Chair.
At the end of every hearing, as I always ask my staff, like, who won? You know what I mean? It's like, you know, like, who won the hearing? We always seem to win. At least, at least we think that.
We all need to be in the same boat, rowing in the same direction, because magnitude is the problem.
It's also fun to win. That's all, you know?
Well, we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate everyone from the administration. It's great to partner with this administration, you know, true environmental champions, and I look forward to many, many good, you know, things that we do together. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You bet.
We'd like to call the first public panel Carolina Corff, Carl Palmquist, Lonnie Portis, and Paul Mankiewicz. Carolina, Carl, Lonnie, and Paul. Paul Mankiewicz.
Yeah, Paul's second.
Yeah. That's it. Carolina?
Okay. Looks like, oh, okay. All right, so we're all, we're all.
Carolina?
Okay. Looks like, okay. All right, so we're all, we're all, we're all set. And I think the clock, is someone doing the clock? You got the clock in there? Okay, yeah, the clock is all good. Yeah, so each witness will have a, it's my discretion to have two minutes or three minutes. So I went with three minutes, because I, now I'm going for the record. I want the, I want this to go to midnight, you know what I mean? So, and you've waited so long, so you waited a long time. How can I do two minutes, really? Come on. And so, please, so, please state your name for the record and proceed with your good testimony.
Carolina Corff, you may begin.
My name is Carolina Corff.
I think your microphone's off.
Push it. No. Thank you. I'm sad to see that so many council members that I admire had to leave, but here we are. My name is Carolina Corff. I'm a resident of Astoria.
You got me.
I do.
Yeah, you got me.
I'm a resident of Astoria, Queens. I came today to state support for Resolution 169, though now that I'm here, I'll also say that I state support for the other resolutions as well. I don't need to repeat the persuasive arguments that Councilmember Russler made for the resolution. We all know that climate change is the universal crisis of our time. Instead, I want to share two personal anecdotes. I was diagnosed with asthma as a child, and I lived in several large cities across the country prior to moving to Queens 16 years ago. Before living here, my asthma had little to no effect on my life. When I fell in love with Queens, I didn't know what asthma alley was, but I soon found out. As a New Yorker, my asthma has landed me in the emergency room, in urgent care, so many times. I cannot leave the house without my rescue inhaler, and I now have regular appointments with a pulmonologist. Even with the privilege of having health insurance, my medical and medication costs have easily surpassed $10,000. I can't imagine what they would be without insurance. I've missed cumulative weeks upon weeks of work, and as an actor, freelancer, and part-time restaurant worker, I didn't get sick pay. Again, I've generally had the privilege of being able to float myself financially in those times, but I know many New Yorkers do not. When we talk about pollution and fossil fuel use, we know there are high-cost externalities, and my personal ones are just one example of millions. Again, I speak from a place of relative privilege, and I'm trying to reinforce that urging the enforcement of the CLCPA is an environmental justice issue. My other personal anecdote is one of pride. I'm currently a master student of environmental law and policy at Vermont Law School, and in policy discussions, I've had the opportunity to share the details, goals, and framework of the CLCPA with other students who come from other states. Their reactions are ones of awe and inspiration, and it's clear that New York has set the bar for climate action on the state level. As 40% of the population, and let's be honest, tax base of the state, we need to send the message to Albany that we will accept nothing less than fulfillment and enforcement of the CLCPA, a promise made to New York that we will indeed be a climate leader and protect our communities. The erosion of political will to do this by fossil fuel interests is completely unacceptable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. As long as we're talking about asthma, I got my thing here. Now, do you use the Aeroflow chamber?
I unfortunately actually had to buy an aerosol, like ventilator.
Oh, okay.
And I don't use that for the rescue one, but...
Yeah, because I used to use just this, but then you do like the chamber, and it goes in the chamber, and you get a better effect, or whatever. I just thought, so...
I'm glad you don't have to have an albuterol respirator with you, and like, you look like Darth Vader.
Oh, my God. Yeah, sorry about that.
That's cooking gas and pollution and living in Astoria. That's where we are in New York City.
No, but I've turned a lot of people on to like the Aero Chamber.
Oh.
Because it's just, it's, I figure...
I'll take the tip. Thank you.
Just saying. Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. And I'm doing a little show and tell here, see? This is the only prop I brought, and that's it. And I carry it around, too. You know, when we get underneath it, so, you know, there you go.
Carl Palmquist.
Great. Okay. So, thanks, Chair Gennaro, and the rest of the Committee on Environmental Protection. Really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today, and it's really nice to kind of be here in this quiet room at this point. I'm Carl Palmquist, Vice Chair of the New York City Group of the Sierra Club, and I'm here to express the Sierra Club's support for Resolution 169. Climate change impacts everyone, and as we approach the 10-year anniversary of Superstorm Sandy, which we've already talked a bit about so far today, later this month, we're reminded of our vulnerability as a city and as a people. But I think we all really realize that we don't need a reminder. Like Councilmember Russler mentioned, we're still seeing the impacts of Superstorm Sandy, and sort of in our city, we're seeing storms that are increasingly frequent and increasingly severe. In 2019, the New York State Legislature passed the CLCPA, a climate, clean energy, and environmental justice law that marked a turning point in New York State's effort to combat climate change and transition the economy to electrification and renewable energy, prioritizing disadvantaged communities. The Climate Action Council scoping plan is essential to the successful and effective implementation of the Climate Act. It decides how we do what we need to do. With Resolution 169, New York City has a chance to guide the CAC's efforts. We ask that the New York City Council make the voices of the more than 8 million New Yorkers it represents heard. This path must get us to clean air, healthy ecosystems, and climate justice. Lastly, I'll mention that for the other two bills, the committee is considering Intros 0330 and 0315 pertaining to new geothermal in New York City and citing renewables on brownfield sites. We're excited to have more renewables in New York City and to work with the city as it further explores these pieces of legislation. Evaluating the balance between just housing, climate resiliency, green space, and clean energy production should be an absolute priority moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To your testimony, I say amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lonnie, Lonnie, Lonnie.
Surprised to see me?
No, I'm not surprised, but I'm always delighted to see you.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Gennaro, and the Committee on Environmental Protection. I'm Lonnie Portis, the Environmental Policy Advocate for NABIXE, Quinnet at WEACT.
Who doesn't know that?
Just got to let the people know, from WEACT for Environmental Justice, and I'm going to try to keep my comments brief, but I'll submit a full written testimony following this hearing. New York City is more reliant on fossil fuel generation than the rest of New York State, which is also behind on the 70% emissions reduction by 2030 mandate for the CLCPA. It's imperative that New York City does everything possible to identify potential for local renewable energy generation from solar, wind, and geothermal. This is why WEACT supports Intro 315 and 330, which both aim to do just that. Also, we're glad to see that city council members supporting the Clean Water, Clean Air, and Green Jobs Environmental Bond Act of 2022 through Resolution 258, which will bring much-needed funds and jobs to New York City to make our communities healthier, greener, and more resilient. WEACT would like to, would also like to applaud the city council members who support the CLCPA scoping plan and the Building, Build Renewable, Public Renewables Act, Resolution 169 and Resolution 189, respectively. I want to uplift the positive impact that both will have on low-income communities and communities of color. The CLCPA scoping plan takes steps towards addressing the disproportionate burden of climate crisis by ensuring that there is adequate investment in disadvantaged communities towards greenhouse gas emission reduction and other climate change mitigation, adaptation, and resiliency measures by identifying disadvantaged communities. It's crucial, it's crucial, sorry, it's crucial to achieving the CLCP mandates of a minimum of 35% to 40% of the benefits of spending on clean energy and energy efficiency programs, projects, and investments. With the Build Public Renewables Act, the New York Power Authority will be able, will be enabled to sell low-cost renewable energy directly to New Yorkers wholesale. NIPO will sell renewable energy to low to moderate-income customers, prioritizing disadvantaged communities. This will lower utility bills for, for over a million households, approximately 3 million New Yorkers, that cannot afford their utility bills now. Thank you again, Chair Gennaro, and the Committee on Environmental Protection for allowing me to testify on such important topics today. And WEACT always looks forward to continue collaboration with this, with you and this committee to achieve climate and environmental justice. And I did that in another three minutes.
Thank you, Lonnie. Let me take this opportunity to, because as people testify, they're going to go. I didn't, I didn't go into the, into detail on the, on the Bond Act resolution, which is mine. It's not just a rah-rah Bond Act, pass it, pass it, pass it thing. It's, it's conditional support based on New York City getting its fair share of Bond Act monies, which it never does. And so, that's a problem. I mean, you know, I had a conversation with the, you know, DEP Commissioner the other day, and the state, I mean, forget about what it's about, but it's, it's $220 million on, for certain kinds of environmental projects to be spread throughout the state. And I know all the Albany tricks, because I was a deputy commissioner at, you know, DEC for seven years. And so, it's $220 million throughout the state. It's written in a way that, that no city in the state of New York can get more than $10 million. So there's $220 million on the table, and all New York City is eligible for, at maximum, is 10 million. And we're more than 40% of the population, it's, you know, I think it's north of 45%. And I don't know what the amount of tax revenue is, 60% or whatever it is. So this is what happens, and the federal monies that are coming down on that, whatever you call it, on the, you know, inflation killer, whatever federal law, what the heck, whatever the hell it is, yeah, whatever it is, you know? That's going to go to the state, and they're going to play the same game with that, you know? And so, but, you know, this is our money, you know, the people in New York City are entitled to their fair share for the Bond Act. So the homework assignment for people here is to, you know, let it be known to your state representatives or whatever, that when the Bond Act passes, which I hope it does, you know, that New York City gets its fair share. So, you know, your senator, your member of the Assembly, they should know that you expect them to make sure that there's proper apportionment of the Bond Act monies. And so, I wanted to do that little commercial for the resolution. People are all networked, you have online, whatever, all your organizations, or whatever, that's like, you know, we need people getting that message out, because we don't want to get the fuzzy end of the lollipop, you know, again, on Bond Act monies. Fuzzy end of the lollipop, anyway, so. Thank you, Lonnie. Paul, my friend Paul Mankiewicz.
Good to see you, Chair.
Good to see you.
So, I'm, I'm going to be very quick on this. This is a great program. It's just, the problem is, your colleague in mind, Dan Walsh, I'm working on the metabolism of New York City, which is a critical piece to solve. We spend something like 3,000 megawatts.
Dan Walsh, the brownfields guy?
Dan Walsh, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, an old friend, and he convinced me to write this paper on metabolism of the city with him. But let me just quickly say, of the 11,000 megawatts of energy, every megawatt costs a half ton of CO2 every hour. So this is a huge amount. Every single day, literally, the cooling of the city with 3,000 megawatts costs something like 34,000 tons of carbon. The point is that it also costs, we have, it's 2,000 megawatts to treat the water at the wastewater treatment plants. Say half, some amount of that water is stormwater, which could be caught as combined sewer, from the combined sewer, with swales. I built the first 30 in the City of New York, as you know. Basically, it could be captured on rooftops, dropping the temperature of the city, dropping the cooling costs of the city, and also giving something like an opening to the biota. If every kid can't get their hands into leaves, we are failing. And that's got to be literally every street, every seaside. It could be Cunningham Park, it could be also West Harlem, or wherever. So the point is that basically, we spend $3,000 to cool the city, 3,000 megawatts. When the city was Manhattan, it produced 130 megawatts every single day, capturing 4,000 tons of carbon in the process. I like what these folks are saying about geothermal. One could couple flood control with building aquifers. I built the first in the city, including a six-acre one under the Sim site, which could also be geothermal, warming and cooling the buildings, doing, if you decouple them, you're moving these things, you're wasting the energy to move it without actually solving multiple problems at the same time. So it's a great way to look, but just as you're saying, this is a pickup game. You've got to get expertise in, and they're only looking at part of the story, and we're not going to get there from here, but we could, because the waste stream of New York is immense, and we could build soils, we could literally make them safe. I built a three-quarter acre park on the Lower East Side with basically the composite biosol of the City of New York, high iron, manganese, and phosphorus. Three-quarters an acre. Now, the lead is coupled by those elements, and also, the kids can play in that stuff. And Dan Walsh has a huge literature on this, as you know. So the point is, our waste stream and the ecology of the city, coupled with water, coupled with geothermal, is probably the way out, but we have to integrate it now. As you said, we have to get the expertise, people talking to one another. One could do this in the city, and we could do it now, but thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Paul. And any, I mean, I would like to have the benefit of anything that you or Dan Walsh have in writing on this, because it's hard to assimilate, just, you know?
Yeah, yeah, it's too quick. I'll send a short piece along, and actually, Dan and I maybe will come and talk to you when he's back from, he's traveling right now, but that's...
You know what? Also, go to Naby, right over there, and just, you know, and she can give you her council email. I want her, I mean, I pretty much see everything anyway, but, you know, that I really have to, you know, get my head into. And so, you know, please see Naby, she'll give you her personal, she'll give you her email, and then she'll get it to me, you know, even though I pretty much see everything anyway. But I appreciate that. And so, thank you very much to this panel. I think this panel is going to be hard to beat. It's going to be hard to beat. Yeah, yeah.
Next panel will be Eric Weltman, Gigi Bergman, Daniel Chengyu Chu, and Karen Iverson.
And while this panel's getting said, I just need like a two-minute recess. Sorry about that. Recession's over. Please find your seats.
Eric Weltman.
Good afternoon, sir. My name is Eric Weltman, and I'm a senior organizer with Food and Water Watch. Food and Water Watch was active in the fight to ban fracking in New York, and we continue to oppose pipelines, power plants, and other... to oppose pipelines, power plants, and other infrastructure that transport and burn frack gas and other fossil fuels. As such, we greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak in favor of two resolutions, 169 and 189, that would advance these essential efforts. It is critical that Governor Hochul and the legislature stand up to the fossil fuel industry and enact bold policies to prevent climate change. The science is clear, and the real life experience is tragically evident. We must move off fossil fuels and do so rapidly or risk devastating climate catastrophe. As we approach the 10th anniversary of Superstorm Sandy, heat waves, hurricanes, and other weather events wreak havoc from Puerto Rico to Pakistan. Too many people have died, and many more will die unless we take action now. New York, both city and state, has an essential role to play by setting example for the nation and world in minimizing our own greenhouse gas emissions. Under your leadership, Chairman Gennaro, the city council, the city banned fossil fuels in new buildings, and now it begins the essential task, as you know, of implementing Local Law 97, establishing energy efficiency standards at buildings. At the state level, this leadership includes issuing bold recommendations by the Climate Action Council to meet the goals of the CLCPA as called for by Resolution 169, and includes passing the Build Public Renewables Act as called for by Resolution 189. A critical element of the Climate Action Council plan must be a ban on frack gas and other fossil fuels in new buildings. We cannot increase our reliance on fossil fuels by allowing new buildings to be hooked on gas. The state must follow the city's lead in establishing such a ban by passing the All Electric Building Act. At the same time, the state must supersize its production of renewable energy. One crucial tool for doing that so is the New York Power Authority, the nation's largest state-owned electricity utility. Established by then-Governor Franklin Roosevelt, NIPA has a strong track record of providing affordable, reliable, clean energy. By passing the Build Public Renewables Act, New York will unleash NIPA's capacity to construct large-scale solar and wind power projects, providing low-cost energy while generating thousands of good green jobs. In conclusion, the New York City Council should lend its voice in support of these state-level policies, essential to protecting our city from climate change threat to our communities and families. We appreciate the leadership of Councilmember Vellis in introducing Resolution 189, and Councilmember Ressler in introducing 169, and respectfully urge the swift approval by the committee and passage by the council, and we hope that Governor Hochul and the state legislature will heed your urgent call to action. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good to see you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, and everyone in Food and Water Watch, and as you were testifying, I just got an inspiration. And this is a, you know, note to staff, to Ricky and to Naby. You know, once we pass the resolutions, this, I'm talking to staff now, you know, there's an official transmittal that goes from the council to the state. We don't pass them and just make wallpaper. We send it to where everyone's supposed to get it. And why don't we do a thing where when we do, like when the council does its transmittal, I guess we'll do our, you know, official transmittal, but then if we can get like a whole coalition of, you know, environmental groups and advocates, like on this big like sign-on letter, I mean, I don't want to tell the advocates what to do, but, you know, they can get like the official copy of the resolutions, both of them, and you can, someone can take the lead, whatever organization wants to do it, and reach out to all like-minded organizations and like send it right to the governor, you know, and so I think.
That sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, I think that'd be good, because it's one thing for her to get a piece of paper from, from the city council, and it's another thing for her to get that same piece of paper again from a host of advocates.
Yes.
About basically saying like, hey, what the hell, you know, and so.
Be a little more polite about it, but.
Yeah, whatever, but, you know, you know what I mean. So that's like a note to Ricky and a note to Naby. Let's figure out a way to, you know, to choreograph that. It came to me as you were testifying. Thank you again.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Gennaro, for holding this hearing. My name is Daniel Chu. I am the energy planner with the New York City Environmental Justice Alliance, or Nija. Nija is also a member of the PE Coalition, along with Upros, the Point CDC, New York Lawyers for the Public Interest, and Clean Energy Group. We're the nation's first comprehensive effort to shut down the peaker plants in New York City. Nija supports all bills and resolutions presented today, which are critical steps in accelerating the city's progress in a just transition. We also call on the council to make necessary amendments to Intro 315 to define renewable energy, incorporate battery storage into this study, and empower the city agencies to take action on the results of the study. New York City government is more than 50% behind the 2025 goals of solar and storage, and we're also dragging our freedom and phasing out fossil fuel assets, putting us on a pathway to fail the state mandated emissions free grid, energy grid by 2040. Intro 315 does not specify what types of renewable energy the city will study, which leaves a big loophole for fossil fuel interests to chip, slip, and fall solutions such as hydrogen combustion into the study. Technologies that although don't produce CO2 are expensive and emit more NOx emissions than burning fossil fuels. This bill should define renewable energy in line with Section 66P of the State Public Service Law. Understanding the viability of using stranded properties, including brownfields for renewable energy development, can benefit environmental justice communities, proprietors, and low-income people of color neighborhoods in phasing out our fossil fuel addiction. PE Coalition has conducted and published extensive research on the benefits of co-siting renewable energy and battery storage, a method that ensures critical resource reliability and lower fossil fuel utilization during peak hours of energy demand. PE Coalition also collaborated with the New York Power Authority over the past few years, confirming the feasibility of transitioning NIPA's peaker plants to battery storage assets alone. Incorporating battery storage into this study will ensure that we can meet the city and state's battery storage targets and improve the resiliency of distributed generation systems. We also urge the council to require this report to be made public and clearly communicated with communities near vacant lots where renewable energy and storage developments are feasible and suitable, especially on sites where affordable housing developments are not desirable. Energy democracy is a core component of a just transition. Energy planning should no longer be done in the back rooms of government and regulated utilities. The people have a right to scrutinize and call for responsible, accountable, and rapid transition process in line with the CLCPA and the Climate Mobilization Act. We further ask the city council to take urgent action on the results of this study, including requiring the de-cast to begin a procurement process within weeks after delivery of this report, and take advantage of benefits and credits where available through the Infrastructure Investment Act and the Inflation Reduction Act. PE Coalition also urges the committee to pass the bills regarding geothermal siting and Resolution 169 on a climate plan to protect New York. PE also supports the resolution regarding the Build Public Renewables Act, which had previously issued a memo and testified to state assembly in support of. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I'm going to give you a little, I'm going to give you a little homework assignment. After you testify, I want you to come up, I want you to see Ricky, get Ricky's emails, because you made very specific recommendations to, you know, to one or both of the intros.
315, yeah.
And so, 315 or 330, I think both, or whatever. But I mean, you know, this is the kind of testimony that a chairman lives for, you know, when, when you, very, very specific recommendations, you know, that should get the full consideration of the council. So whatever document you could provide, you know, directly to Ricky, that'd be great.
Yeah.
So you're working with both Eddie and Elizabeth? So Upros?
So Upros is a member of Nija, and they're also a member of PE Coalition, and we work together.
Right. But that's headed by Elizabeth, right, Upros, right?
Yeah, and I work for Eddie.
Oh, you work for Eddie?
Yeah.
Yeah, so say hi to Eddie and, you know, to Elizabeth for me.
I will.
And so, and make sure you get those specific recommendations to Ricky right here.
Yeah, we will submit our written testimony while also to Senator Ricky.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, because the very specific stuff is, that's like the nectar, like, we love that. Thank you. Please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jean Bergman, and I am here today testifying in favor of Resolution 189 on behalf of the Sane Energy Project and the Public Power New York Coalition, of which Sane is a member. This resolution calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Build Public Renewables Act. The BPRA will empower the New York Power Authority to own and build new renewable energy generation plants, resulting in more clean and affordable energy for New Yorkers. I want to begin by thanking the city council members who have responded to the urgency of this moment by supporting the resolution. You have aligned with the majority of New Yorkers who are calling for publicly owned renewable energy and who are desperate for real solutions to both the climate crisis and the lack of affordable heat and power. We are eager to take this mandate from the New York, from New York City back to Albany to win passage of the Build Public Renewables Act. The BPRA will lower energy costs for New Yorkers because publicly owned electricity is less expensive than that produced by private companies, because public entities don't need to make a profit for investors. And cheap NIPA power will be prioritized first for government buildings like schools, universities, and hospitals, and for low-income residents. BPRA will reduce the opportunities of privately owned companies, whether they're selling fossil fuel-fired or renewable energy, to gouge residents with high and unpredictable bills. And the BPRA is revenue neutral. Bonds and revenues from the sale of its electricity will cover the cost of construction. Renewable energy also promises substantial savings compared to fossil fuel energy overall. The prices of gas and oil are both rising steadily and spiking wildly because of international conflicts and extreme weather. Renewable energy costs are intrinsically stable and much less expensive than fossil fuels. More fundamentally, the dual crises of energy affordability and climate chaos make it clear that we must transform our energy system from one based on investor-owned corporations seeking to upsell a commodity irrespective of the harms it may cause, to one that treats heat and power as necessary public goods, which must be carefully developed, produced, and managed to mitigate economic injustice and environmental destruction. The BPRA is a small step towards this more just, more rational system. Other resolutions before this committee today, including especially 169, and legislation in Albany may move us further and are needed to move us further, but it is critical that we avoid the trap of false solutions that fail to address the core issues of greenhouse gas, gas emissions regardless of source. And here, I'm looking at you, hydrogen and RNG. The climate crisis is upon us. We have passed crucial tipping points, and the earth has entered a death spiral. We have been lucky so far here in New York to escape the wildfires, droughts, extreme heat, and floods that afflict other regions, but we are not unaffected. We're already trying to manage higher food prices from heatflation, climate refugees seeking safety and kindness that are stressing our fragile services and the health impacts of hotter and longer summers. I urge all the members of the city council to vote for Resolution 189 for renewable public power and to support the other resolutions that will have a meaningful impact on our fossil fuel and non-fossil fuel methane emissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Every time a word or a phrase has never been used in, you know, any of my hearings in this committee going back to 2002, I always make note of it, and it's the first time that the phrase "death spiral" has been used in this committee going back to 2002. So we made, you know, we made committee history today, but.
Sorry to hear it.
Yeah.
I wish it was something happier.
No one's ever used "death spiral" before, like, in the committee, and I just want to make note of that. And thank you for your, if you're good testimony, I, it's a scary thing, "death spiral," but not inaccurate. And thank you very much for your, you know, compelling and passionate testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Imus.
Good afternoon, Chair Gennaro. My name is Karen Imus, and I'm the Public Policy Manager for Attentive Energy, an offshore wind developer working here in the New York Byte. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. We're here to express support for Resolution 169. Attentive Energy is developing an 84,000-acre area located approximately 54 miles off the coast of New York, and when completed, the project has the potential to generate 3,000 megawatts of clean energy to power 1 million homes. The power will support the state's climate and economic goals. In the years building up to the federal lease auction, an ultimate award of a lease from the federal government, Attentive Energy focused its effort on meaningful and proactive stakeholder engagement, a community-first approach to offshore wind development, and an approach that is really important for any renewable energy project coming into the New York landscape. We've been active on the ground in the New York Byte for more than three years, connecting with stakeholders, labor, seeking out diverse voices and perspectives, and listening to the needs of local communities, and we look forward to a shared success of this project moving forward. Today's hearing comes at an important time in New York City's and New York State's efforts to tackle climate change and in develop an aggressive renewable energy agenda. And Attentive Energy supports Resolution 169, which urges the Climate Action Council to draft and the government to implement the final Climate Action Council scoping plan that commits to meeting the CLCPA goals, the Bold Climate and Environmental Justice Action in New York. By enshrining into law clear and concrete targets for developing wind, solar, energy efficiency, and storage technologies, the law provides a clear timeline for the rapid deployment of clean energy, and in the process, importantly, unlocking the next wave of investment in New York's clean energy industries. Attentive Energy and our team here in New York is particularly focused on supporting the CLCPA's goals alongside creating economic development opportunities and directing spending on climate programs to disadvantaged communities. The technology of building the offshore wind farms is just one piece of the success. The community piece, the economic piece, and the environmental justice piece is just as relevant. Creating employment pathways that promote diversity and include historically disadvantaged communities will help begin to address environmental justice priorities. These goals are not only critical to combating greenhouse gas emissions, but also meeting targets that this city council has set for greener buildings. Achieving the CLCPA targets is essential, given that electricity represents a significant share of total energy consumption in many buildings. Further, as we know, renewable energy efforts like offshore wind are linked to protecting public health, further strengthened by the CLCPA's requirement that the state prioritize projects that both reduce GHG emissions and eliminate pollutants in historically disadvantaged communities. Attentive Energy is committed to tackling these challenges, delivering clean renewable energy projects to New York City alongside a robust community-first approach. That is why we're here to echo support for Resolution 169, and we look forward to continuing to work with federal, state, and local partners to achieve our shared ambitious climate goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you for being here. And I didn't know about the firm, Attentive Energy, but I do now. And is it a big firm?
It's, here in the New York-New Jersey region, we're about 30 employees and greater across the country. And then globally, there are other renewable energy projects taking place around the world. We are one of the federal leaseholders. Boem had the federal lease auction earlier this year, and a number of offshore wind companies have secured lease rights. And so we are one of those awardees and are now preparing to bid into NiSERTA's open solicitation, which has a deadline at the end of December. So a lot of action coming into the city, to Long Island, to the region, which I'm sure we're going to see a lot more of in the coming months and years.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
That's really great. Thank you very much to this panel. Appreciate your good testimony and your patience. You know, the hour is late and you're still here. Thank you very much. And those other companies you're talking about, I don't see them here today, but you're here. Hang on.
Next panel will be Hayam Gross, Sarah Gronin, Joanna Altman-Smith, and Allison Konzadine. So, no Sarah, Cindy Bobe.
Hey, we meet again.
Milo, whenever you're ready.
Okay, I think we're going to go from, in this panel, just to change it up, we're going to go from my left to my right, which is your right to your left, so starting with you.
All right. I got to press, what button am I pressing when I'm going to start?
The sergeant will direct you.
Okay.
I think you just got to talk right into the mic.
Okay. So first, I wanted to say thank you. You're amazing. I'm having a great time, and I feel your, your love and your passion, and I hope I have enough time to read this.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Hi, my name is Cindy Bobe. I'm a Boricua single mom who lives in Brooklyn, and I'm finally being brave enough to stand up, to fight for us right, fight in peace, of course. I am seeking justice for a safer world, not only for my amazing children, but for all the amazing children in the world. They deserve a beautiful, safe planet where they can live in peace and without so many illnesses caused by all the chemicals that are put out into the world. It's super sad that everything is about money and greed, not caring about people's health and just allowing all these things that potentially kill lots of people daily and make so many sick, having to fight for their lives through long treatments and medicines that cost so much money, which lots of people can't afford, and therefore, they end up losing their life, and it's all because of the greed of the world. It truly breaks my heart. I'm asking you to please join me in saving the future of the children. Together, we can make this world a better place. Please, please thank up the children all around the world who are dreaming to have a future of being a doctor or a firefighter, and if we don't stop all of these bad practices, the catastrophes will get worse, as it has been impacting my beautiful island, Puerto Rico, and other places around the world who are suffering the effects of climate change.
Take it down. Take it down.
If we don't make a change towards the right direction, eventually climate change will end the world, and the children won't be able to make their dreams come true. So please do right by our children. Please do the right thing. I believe in everyone. Thank you all for your time. I love you. God bless you and your families. P S, if you didn't realize, I care about you all and your families as well. I will keep praying for our world. Thank you. Be the change. It starts with you.
Thank you very much. And we, you know, thank you, and we, on behalf of the city council, by the power invested in me, I send you the love of the city council in your direction. Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you. God bless you. Thank you.
Tough act to beat.
Good afternoon. My name's Joanna Altman-Smith. I'm a member of 350 Brooklyn and also very active with New York Renew's, also a mother, also brought to this place by a strong sense of urgency. So I'd just like to share with the council some of my personal experiences around the C L C P A. I'm here in support of Resolution 169. Over the last decade, I've worked alongside thousands of other New York citizens to pass the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. Some of us even sprawled out on the floor of the New York State Capitol in front of the Executive Chamber doors, risking arrest, staring at state trooper boots while inside the former governor was slowly, ever so slowly, changing his mind and eventually listening to our state representatives, who we finally, in 2019, convinced to vote the C L C P A into law, black-letter law, as you like to say, which is to say that I have had a great interest in how the Climate Action Council would get down to work. Watching various CAC Zoom meetings, I rooted for the scientists and representatives from environmental conservation and justice organizations who spoke truth to the fear-mongering fossil fuel representatives who had bought their way with big campaign donations onto that same council. Given all that, it's something of a miracle that the CAC's deliberations have resulted in a draft scoping plan that robustly pursues a rapid and just transition to low emissions future for New York State. The plan is sensitive to the needs of all communities, investing heavily in those where the negative health and social outcomes of the old ways of doing business are most pronounced. Let's be clear, the scoping plan poses an existential threat to the fossil fuel industry, and they're pushing back hard, spending millions of dollars lobbying localities to undermine it. And that's why the New York City Council, that represents nearly half of all New York State residents, must adopt Resolution 169 to help bolster that scoping plan. It's essential to our statewide approach to combating the climate breakdown that we're seeing around us in real time. I'll end by mentioning that I attended Mini Climate Week, and also just yesterday at Columbia, they had a big gathering of energy experts at a summit. And two oh one, all of the top executives from multinational banks who are continuing to invest full steam in fossil fuel infrastructure, and also all the leaders at the think tanks and the academics that are advising them, are all saying how hard it is to invest in green infrastructure. They're saying they don't have the right instruments, they don't have the right ways of calculating the risk, but what they really don't have is a way of calculating the extreme paradigm shift that is essential to protecting us all from the existential risks of climate change, and that's where government comes into play. Government has to step in with sound policies and laws that give them no other choice. And the Climate Action Council's final scoping plan needs to do exactly that, and we can help them do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Milo.
Good afternoon. My name is Milo. I'm a resident of the Lower East Side. I'm New York-born and bred, and I was 13 years old when Hurricane Sandy hit the city, and I still remember having to walk up and down my apartment building in the dark with my flashlight and the way that the city was really devastated from the storm. And as other people have mentioned, we're still trying to recover from Hurricane Sandy. Now, at age 23, I'm a research assistant, and I study the effects of extreme weather events that are occurring at higher frequencies because of climate change on public health, as well as the effects of fossil fuel pollution on public health. And as other people have mentioned, fossil fuel pollution, in addition to causing the climate crisis, also causes various, you know, immediate health outcomes, including asthma, cardiovascular disease. I'm actually studying the effects on preterm birth, and because of historic racist housing policies, people of color are disproportionately exposed to fossil fuel pollution, and I'm looking at the effects on preterm birth, and there's a huge amount of evidence that fossil fuel pollution is one of the contributing factors for why preterm birth is much higher among Black families compared to white families. And preterm birth has really long-term chronic implications. It can lead to neurological, respiratory, digestive, visual, auditory, I'm probably missing a few other, like, so many health effects. And no child deserves to have, you know, that put on them because of where they were born and where they're being raised. And no child deserves to be dealing with the extreme heat that we're experiencing more and more in this city. No child deserves to have to worry about the next Hurricane Sandy, but here we are. So we need the city council to pass Resolution 169 and 189 in support of strong climate policies for the city and for the state. We need to democratize our energy system so that it's responsive to the needs of the public and not profit-driven utility companies and fossil fuel companies. And, you know, I know that I'm speaking to the choir, like, I know you guys care about climate change, and I just wanted to share some stories about why this fight is really important to me and why it's important to, you know, everybody in this city, in this world. And given all of the obstacles we're facing at a federal level, we really need to step up at a state and local level to make sure that New York is doing its part and is leading in this fight. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And I can assure you that both resolutions will pass, so we're getting that done.
Good afternoon, Chair Gennaro. My name is Hayem Gross. I'm an architect. I am chair of the New York City 2030 District. We're a not-for-profit partnership of organizations and activists confronting climate change. NYC 2030 is one of 20 districts across North America, counting over 500 million square feet of properties as members. We're implementing Heat Cool Smart Brooklyn, which is a NYSERTA-funded and Brooklyn Borough President-sponsored community campaign to retrofit buildings with clean heating and cooling and weatherization. And I speak enthusiastically in support of council resolution number 169, and also the intros and other resolutions before you. The Resolution 169 calls for the final Climate Action Council scoping plan to promote bold climate and environmental justice action in New York. The C L C P A commitments for New York State to meet 40% reduction in carbon emissions and 70% renewable energy by 2030 are tremendously ambitious and certainly milestones and very difficult targets to meet. And in addition, the commitment to direct 40% of the benefits and spending on climate initiatives to disadvantaged communities is laudable and also a very high bar to meet. The state's actions mandated through C L C P A are essential, but they're woefully insufficient. New York City, the communities, institutions, businesses, all stakeholders have to do a lot more to achieve these targets. I'm probably not going to have enough time to read all this. I did submit a written testimony. You know all the key metrics here, but 42% of the city's G H G emissions are devoted or drawn from heating and space heating and hot water. The decarbonization of New York City's buildings, particularly its multifamily buildings, are going to take an enormous effort. I do the stuff on the ground. We've been doing it through the pandemic, and I can tell you that the resources just are not there. Over 75% of New York's residential buildings are heated by air or gas. The multifamily buildings of 5 to 25 units are not, for the most part, covered by Local 97, so we need a lot more support there. In May, Con Edison suspended its clean heat program, basically pulled the plug on the key program to transition from fossil fuels to electrified heat pumps. They're not going to reinstate that program until sometime in 2023, so we lost heating And so $227 million that they spent in the first couple of years, only 10% went to meet multifamily buildings, and multifamily buildings account for over 60%, 60% of New York City's dwelling units. The other intros represent a lot more of the picture that we need to meet: microgrids, thermal energy, district energy systems, et cetera. We need community-scale projects. We need whole building cross-trade and cross-solutions initiatives to really meet these retrofits through, meet these targets through effective deep energy retrofits. We also need to team these contractors together.
Need to summarize, because I have people waiting to testify on line also.
We could go on and on, but I support 169, the other efforts, and I also greatly support your revival of the New York City Climate Adaptation Task Force.
Thank you.
And I'd love to help you with the wonderful resources that we have. We work at the Brooklyn Navy Yard. We work with Pratt and New School, and we want to work with you.
We should reach out to the administration, because, like, they're the ones who get the, I gave them a lot of latitude in how they can set up the climate action, climate change, New York City climate, whatever, the panel. And I gave them, like, a fair amount of latitude. It looks like I gave them too much latitude, to the point where they just thought, you know, that the law was a recommendation, which it is not. And so I passed the law, I was terminated and out of office, I'm back, and the Climate Change Adaptation Task Force is coming back.
Okay. Well, I hope you can also see what, find out with, specifically with regard to the, these multifamily buildings and these small to medium-sized multifamily buildings that we know are ubiquitous in the city and don't have any resources. See what the New York City Accelerator is doing, and maybe you can put a little fire on the panel.
Yeah, I mean, that is available to people, and, you know, and buildings that are, don't necessarily have, that are not under the umbrella of Local 97 can avail themselves of, you know, all of the, you know, the help from, you know, from the accelerator. And so, but first things first, like, we've got to get Local 97, which is going to be, you know, Herculean to get that done. Thank you very much. Thank you very much to this panel. Cindy, come here.
We'll be shifting to online testimony now. First up, we have Donna DiCestano.
Okay, thanks so much. Good afternoon, Chair Gennaro. My name is Donna DiCestano.
Hi, Donna.
Hi, Jim. How are you? I'm Eastern Regional Director for the Climate and Clean Energy Program at N R D C, and I want to thank you and the council for your strong leadership on tackling climate change, and appreciate the opportunity to testify today on behalf of the N R D C, Urban Green Council, and the Regional Plan Association. The city council should pass Resolution 169 to show its support for a strong final C L C P A scoping plan. 2019 was a big year for bold action on climate in New York. As the New York City Council adopted its landmark Local 97 Building Performance legislation, the state advanced aggressive climate policy with the adoption of the C L C P A, one of the strongest laws of its kind in the country, with ambitious climate and clean energy targets, as well as a central focus on equity in disadvantaged communities, including a requirement that 35% to 40% of overall benefits accrue to those communities. The New York State Climate Action Council, which was tasked with developing the state's scoping plan for how we will achieve the ambitious C L C P A targets, released a strong draft scoping plan at the end of 2021, and will release a final scoping plan by the end of this year. We strongly support the passage of Resolution 169 because it is critical that the final C L C P A scoping plan remain as strong as possible in order to meet the law's climate, clean energy, and equity targets. Doing so will lead to both climate and environmental justice action in New York and will deliver tremendous benefits to all New Yorkers, including lower toxic air pollution, thousands of new families sustaining local jobs, and a greater quality of life. The state's scoping plan will also play an important role in achieving the goals of Local 97, as it contains key recommendations to significantly scale up energy efficiency in building electrification. There is well-funded and formidable opposition to the state's vision and draft scoping plan that stands to benefit financially from continuing the status quo, but the reality is that a strong plan to meet the state's climate and equity commitments is good for all New Yorkers. Adopting Resolution 169 will demonstrate strong support from the state's largest municipality for a C L C P A scoping plan that ambitiously leads to a better climate, prioritizes the most vulnerable communities, and a healthier future for all. Intros 350 and 330 will illuminate new opportunities to advance heat pumps and renewable energy deployment within the city. With limited opportunities for citing new clean energy projects within our densely developed landscape, finding new opportunities in spaces that are already owned by the city pursuant to Intro 315 will be another tool we have to continue to scale up clean technologies like solar, P V, and storage. In addition, the database created by Intro 330 will further support the deployment of heat pumps across the city by helping to support the engineering and design of geothermal heat pump systems, which are another important, another part of our broadening toolbox to reach wide-scale building electrification and meet Local 97 targets. I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify today regarding these important issues. The N R D C, Urban Green Council, and R P A, thank you again for your leadership, and look forward to continuing to work with you and the council to advance clean energy in New York and maintain New York City's strong climate legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Always a real pleasure to see you. Anyone listening, you may or may not know that Donna served as council with great distinction as a council to the Committee on Environmental Protection, and, you know, aside from being a wonderful colleague, is a great friend as well. And, and, just to, is Donna still on? I see myself here. Oh. I just had my, I got a single-family house, it's 97 years old, and now it's all, we heat and cool with heat pumps now, so I knew you'd be proud of me for doing that, so.
That's wonderful to hear. Thanks, Chair Gennaro. That's wonderful.
Yeah, sometimes I feel like I'm 97, but anyway, that's another story. Donna, always great to see you. Thank you so much for participating in this hearing and giving us the benefit of your, of your, of your great views on behalf of all the organizations that you represent, and they are very lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Chair Gennaro.
You bet.
Next, we'll be hearing from Georgie Page, followed by Alexis Hidalgo, followed by Ten Koffler.
Starting time.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, I'm sorry. Good afternoon, Chair Gennaro, and members of the Committee on Environmental Protection. My name is Georgie Page, and I am testify in support of Resolution 169 and a strong, courageous, rigorous scoping plan from the State Climate Action Council that will meet our C L C P A mandate. I also support Resolution 189 and Intros 315 and 330. First, I want to thank council members Russell, Hanip, and others for consistently championing critical environmental legislation, as well as resolutions like this, and never taking their eyes off the ball. I am a private citizen who, for the last three years, has dedicated around 10 hours of nearly every week, doing everything I can to help forestall or mitigate the impending crisis of global warming. Our group, 350 Brooklyn, is composed of volunteers, who nevertheless mobilized hundreds of responses to the scoping plan. I hope in this government, that is theoretically of the people, for the people, and by the people, our voices might hold some weight against the constant lobbying onslaught of fossil fuel interests, whose only motivation is greed, not wildlife. is greed. Not wildlife, not the future, not our children's health, greed. What motivated me to come here today? I am not motivated purely by altruism. Most days, I am motivated by anxiety. I'm supposed to be helping my partners start a contracting business so that one day we can build our passive dream home. I've already designed a logo and priced-out t-shirt. But these climate questions haunt me. Where can we build? Where will it be safe from drought, wildfires, power outages, or, on the other end of the spectrum, flooding, tornadoes, hurricanes, and the escalations of fear and war? While I do realize that the vast majority of people on our planet don't have the luxury of thinking about building their own businesses or dream homes, they are thinking about potable water and educating their daughters, the reality is that we are all connected, and everything is at stake. Our fates are intertwined. Therefore, increasingly, citizens, consumers, activists, and you, our elected officials, are called upon to do something that does not come naturally to the average American. We must think globally. We must take very seriously the task of calculating our global impact and our energy security as part of this conversation. More and more, we are starting to see that the toxicity of oil, and its extraction, and its marketing, corrodes everything it touches. So we must hasten its obsolescence. In fact, in New York State, offshore wind, solar, and even geothermal energy will soon come online, powering hundreds of thousands of homes and businesses. We are right on the cusp of an energy revolution that can create a safer world and more prosperity for more people, as long as we can avoid getting trapped into a brand-new, pro-dependent relationship with the oil industry, and the expensive hydrogen fuel cells and so-called eco-fuels that they're peddling. Don't be fooled. The new fuels are just as bad as the old fuels, and we are running out of time. I was also moved to come here today by the lies being spread by fossil fuel interests like the American Petroleum Institute and their phony activist front group. And I just have 30 more seconds. I'm New Yorkers for Affordable Energy and Energy Citizens. These groups are desperate, and they are still succeeding in spreading dangerous misinformation. Just a few months ago, these corporate shills launched, launched a television ad to drum up opposition to the All Electric Buildings Act, using bald-faced lies and sellout politicians. The ad claims that the bill would ban gas stoves and furnaces, sticking you with a $30,000 price tag to replace them. The truth is that the bill actually only applies to new construction, so no one would be required to replace their stove or furnace. We can't go forward if we keep letting them drag us back. Resolution 169 helps to counter their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your passionate and comprehensive testimony. I have to beg the remaining witnesses' indulgence for two minutes. I need to excuse myself for two minutes. I literally will be back in two minutes. My apologies for the witnesses, and Ricky will give the order of witnesses, and I'll be right back.
Testifying next will be Amanda Sacks, followed by Ken Coughlin, followed by Shavanti
Okay, thank you.
Alexis Hidalgo, whenever you're ready.
We're back.
Time has begun.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alexis Hidalgo, and I'm the Equitable Policy and Programs Fellow for the New York League of Conservation Voters. NYLCB represents over 30,000 members in New York City, and we're committed to advancing a sustainability agenda that will make our people, our neighborhoods, and our economy healthier and more resilient. I would like to thank Chair Gennaro for the opportunity to testify today. Burning fossil fuels creates harmful air pollution and perpetuates environmental injustice. Communities of color and low-income communities are more likely to live close to power plants, refineries generating oil and gas, petrochemical facilities producing chemicals, and ports, highways, and railways generating pollution. NYC also has one of the country's highest rates of asthma hospitalizations and deaths among children and young adults, African-Americans, and Latino patients, and residents of high-poverty neighborhoods. While the city has a multitude of commitments in place to encourage a transition to net-zero emissions, these plans are not only the start, these plans are only the start of lowering emissions. We need to expand renewable energy in the city, which is why NYLCB supports Intro 315 and 330. The majority of homes and businesses burn fossil fuels on site for heating, contributing to over 30% of New York's greenhouse gas emissions. Geothermal heat pumps would be able to provide low- and zero-emission heating, so we need to make it easier for building owners and utilities to know the best places for geothermal wells, and where drilling would clash with existing use of subterranean areas. Intro 330 would cut that red tape to make building more geothermal energy, to make building more geothermal energy easier. In addition to expanding geothermal energy, the city should study vacant and underutilized city-owned sites for the potential to be used for renewable energy generation. This would allow for the expansion of renewable energy in sites such as closed and capped landfills and brownfields in the city. Transforming these spaces would reduce emissions and could potentially allow more New Yorkers to benefit from clean energy through programs like Community Solar. These bills, which would promote renewable and alternative energy sources, will help to reduce our reliance on energy produced from fossil fuels, therefore improving public health and fighting climate change. With ever-increasing energy demand and rising energy costs, it's imperative that New York City adopts renewable, sustainable sources of energy production. Thank you so much for letting me testify today.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your great work on behalf of the League of Conservation Voters. It would be, it would be interesting to me if the, if we, if we could get the, we just added on, you know, right before the hearing, but my reso on the Bond Act that advocates for fair share, you know, we'd be very grateful for the support of LCV on that as well. I mean, we don't want to discourage people from voting for the Bond Act, but we're just looking for fair share. And so, that would be something that, that I, you know, that the council would appreciate, if we can get the support of LCV on the Fair Share Bond Act reso. So, maybe talk to Julie about that.
Definitely will do. Thank you.
And please send her my best, and Josh Kleinberg as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ken Coughlin.
Time has begun.
Hi, Chair Gennaro. Thank you for hanging in there with us and for your attentiveness, and I hope your vocal cords are fully restored soon, because the environment needs your voice.
Thank you.
I am Ken Coughlin, a board member of Stop the Chop NYNJ, and we strongly support Resolution 169. Stop the Chop NYNJ is a nonprofit volunteer organization that was formed to ban nonessential, meaning sightseeing and commuter helicopter traffic in the New York metropolitan region. Helicopters are among the most carbon-intensive modes of transportation, burning between 50 and 500 gallons of fuel per hour, depending on the aircraft. Some still even burn leaded fuel, which was banned 25 years ago by the EPA. Close to 100,000 nonessential helicopter flights originate from New York area heliports each year. Despite sporadic efforts to reduce this number, conditions have only worsened. In the last five years, New York City's 311 system saw a more than 2,000% increase in noise complaints related to helicopters. On fair days in my neighborhood, the Upper West Side, the near constant drone of helicopters has become the new normal. In June, the New York State Legislature took a good first step toward giving us some relief when it passed the Stop the Chop Act, which will allow New Yorkers and our Attorney General to sue certain helicopter companies for excessive helicopter noise. We urge Governor Hochul to sign this bill without further delay. We also urge the governor to close the West 30th Street heliport located in Hudson River Park to nonessential helicopter companies. A park is no place for a heliport. Also, as we know, the adverse impact of air pollutants falls especially hard on people living in New York City's environmental justice neighborhoods, many of which are directly under the paths of commuter and tourist helicopters. If we are to meet the goals of the Climate Protection Act and avert the worst effects of the crisis upon us, every transportation mode must be held to a new and urgent CO2 standards. Helicopters are the literal low-hanging fruit in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for, I mean, it was, I gave you a little bit of a latitude, I gave you a little bit of latitude there. You waited a long time, but you tied it in well enough with the topics that we're discussing today, that I appreciate your testimony, and you're creating that nexus between the helicopters and the items we're talking about today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good.
Shavanti Kanakal?
Starting time.
Good afternoon, Chair Gennaro, and members of the council. My name is Shavanti Kanakal, and I'm the Resiliency Planner with the New York City Environmental Justice Alliance, also known as NEJA. I'm testifying today on behalf of NEJA and Climate Works for All, which is a coalition of labor, community, faith, environmental justice, and climate organizations fighting climate change and inequality in New York City by demanding a just transition. NEJA and Climate Works for All support both bills being introduced today, Intro 315 and Intro 330, and all the resolutions being proposed. New York City is currently more reliant on fossil fuel generation than the rest of New York State. We're currently behind on the 70% emissions reduction mandate set by the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, as well as the city's goal to install 100 megawatts of solar energy and 500 megawatts of energy storage by 2025. The city should use public land to invest locally in renewable energy and energy storage that could meet peak demand needs, reduce electricity bills, and provide local resilient power. Renewable and resilient energy systems will advance energy democracy, reduce energy cost burdens, improve air quality, and strengthen the resiliency of communities, while also capturing the community and workforce benefits sustainable systems can deliver. Using vacant and underutilized properties, including brownfields, for renewable energy development, can transform polluted land into future clean energy hubs, and has the potential to directly benefit environmental justice communities. To this end, Intro 315 can help achieve the city's and state's climate goals and reduce our reliance on fossil fuel generation. We need to ensure that we're prioritizing and accelerating timelines for meeting our emissions reduction targets. As my colleague Daniel previously stated, I'd like to uplift that in regard to Intro 315, the city should also consider studying energy storage capabilities on these vacant and underutilized lots. The city should clarify, the legislation should clarify a clear definition of renewable energy, as there should be no room for false solutions. And the generated report should be made public and communicated with communities that we identified underutilized lots are close to. As we shift away from fossil fuels, it's imperative that we think about diverse sources of renewable energy. Geothermal is a reliable and predictable source of energy that uses significantly less electricity than conventional heating and cooling systems. We support Intro 330 to help create a more streamlined database of subsurface conditions, which is essential to identify the best locations for where geothermal energy can be harnessed. Community and district-level geothermal infrastructure has the potential to be incredibly beneficial to large campuses, like uni buildings, hospitals, nature properties, a large affordable housing building, schools, etc.
Time expired.
We're glad to hear the city looking into locations for district-level geothermal. New York City's current electricity generation is polluted and weighted and inequitable. We must collectively work to achieve New York City's climate mandates like Local 97 and those that have been outlined in the CLCPA.
Please conclude.
I'm actually done, so thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you very much for your testimony and for your good work on behalf of the New York Environmental Justice Alliance. We really appreciate you being here and your patience in waiting so long to testify, and it was good testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
And finally, Rami Danawi?
Starting time.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, the council, for this opportunity. I apologize, but I am in public transport, so I apologize for the sound. My name is Rami Danawi. I'm the Environmental Justice Coordinator for El Puente. And first and foremost, I want to echo El Puente's support for these bills, Intro 315 and 330, as well as Resolution 169, and to echo everything our partners have mentioned before in terms of the 100 megawatts of solar and 500.
I think we lost the last witness. He was giving his testimony, but the signal dropped, it seems.
Rami, if you're able to.
Apologies for that. So these bills are a first step, or actually a step in a journey forward that will require continuous action if we actually intend to keep our word and our legal and fossil fuel industry. The city must clearly define the new community and face that definition on the CLCPA compliant plan. New York City is also required to electrify government operations and solve 100 megawatts of solar energy and 500 megawatts of energy storage by 2025. And so, in order to meet that, we need to pass these resolutions, and we need to move forward with government support, along with the public support of these resolutions. The Bill 0315 should also consider the possibility of studying these energy storage capabilities on city-owned lots. I know I am echoing a lot of what our partner organizations and advocates have been mentioning, but it is very imperative that we realize and acknowledge that New York City and any law that we pass here is, does not just affect our local city. New York City is the third-largest emitter of greenhouse gases globally, and as we saw globally in the past few months, Pakistan had flooding that almost displaced 30 million people. And so, any decision we make here, to put it in a global perspective, will affect millions upon millions of people. All that to say, we need to also have a transparent public process where the communities that are in proximity to the vacant lots that are going to be studied for geothermal and energy storage and energy generation need to be communicated with, and made, and these reports need to be made available for these communities to actually engage in the public, in the public process. The time to act is now. You know, we might believe that the illusion of the climate catastrophe is a future or near-future concern for us here in the global north, but for those that we impact in the global south, it is as real as the voices that we heard today. And I want to say thank you for the opportunity and the time provided.
Thank you very much for your good and compelling testimony, and for your patience in waiting so long. What was the organization that you represent?
The organization that I present is El Puente. We're a community-based organization in South Williamsburg that focuses on human rights, social justice, and social justice, and the nexus between environmental justice and the arts.
Well, I, you know, thank you very much for your great advocacy on behalf of so many, and it is noted and appreciated, and once again, we appreciate your patience for waiting to testify. Thank you very much.
We have inadvertently missed anyone that has registered to testify today and has yet to have been called. Please use the Zoom raise hand function, and you will be called in the order that your hand has been raised. Seeing no one, I will turn it over to the chair for closing remarks.
I just want to put on the record that I think this is a very, you know, valuable and timely hearing. It was a good oversight hearing, as well as a good legislative hearing. So we have plenty to work with now to keep us busy as we try to get these resolutions passed, these bills negotiated, and this oversight topic fully explored, and I certainly intend to press the administration on the fate of the New York State, you know, New York City Climate Adaptation Change Panel, which seems to have fallen into oblivion. It is my intention to make sure that it is returned and that the administration follows the letter of the law when it comes to all laws that are passed by the council. And with that said, I appreciate the presence of the administration, all the witnesses, the staff, the sergeants, everyone who was involved, Ricky and Abby for staying the distance. And with that said, this hearing is hereby adjourned.